Good afternoon. This meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order. Everyone should take a moment to mute their cell phones. CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live at www.cuny.edu/livestream and the CUNY Board of Trustees website. I now move that this meeting convene an executive session pursuant to Article VII, Section 105 of the Public Officers' Law to discuss matters pertaining to personnel, investigations, and litigation. May I have a second?
Second.
All right. We are in executive session. We'll reconvene in public session following this executive session. We are back in public session. On December 5th, 2022, the Board of Trustees convened an in-person public hearing jointly with the budget request hearing at LaGuardia Community College. Thirteen people testified via Zoom and 35 individuals testified in person. Most speakers were members of PSC and encouraged the university to increase the number of full-time faculty, increase adjunct salaries, and increase the number of full-time mental health counselors on campuses. They also advocated for a free CUNY. They also expressed concerns over infrastructure and space issues at various campuses, including lack of heat in various buildings and ventilation issues post-COVID. PSC members also expressed concerns about the university's proposed budget request demanding increased budget allocations that fully fund contract settlements, competitive salaries, and infrastructure improvements. Graduate students also testified about their benefits and submitted a petition to bring food services back to the graduate school. As always, a summary of the hearing, including testimony, was circulated to the trustees and the chancellor's staff and posted to the trustee's website. I would like to offer congratulations to trustee Kevin Kim, who earlier this fall was appointed by New York Senator Schumer to be part of the eight-person commission to study the potential creation of a National Museum of Asian Pacific American History and Culture as directed under the Commission to Study the Potential Creation of a National Museum of Asian Pacific American History and Culture Act, which was introduced by Congressperson Grace Meng, shepherded through the Senate by Senator Schumer, Majority Leader Schumer, and signed into law in June, establishing, maintaining, funding, and operating such a facility in the nation's capital, possibly as part of the Smithsonian Institution in Washington, D.C. The commission is responsible for submitting a report with recommendations to the President and Congress on the potential creation of a museum. Congress would then need to act on those recommendations to establish a museum. Congratulations, trustee Kevin. [applause] Whoa, this is going to be... On November 16th and 17th, Her Majesty Queen Diaby, I'm going to leave it there, from the Democratic Republic of the Congo, returned to CUNY touring three campuses, meeting members of the university community, and discussing her extensive advocacy work to benefit people in Africa. On her two-day tour, she visited the College of Staten Island, where she graduated in 1992, Queens College, and the New York City College of Technology, meeting with Vice Chair of the Board, Sandra Wilken. And Sandra, this is a repeat for you. I know she is a friend, and it is great that you're taking the lead there. Thank you so much. And participating in a town hall with students, which was moderated by Salama Tu. Ah, excellent. Congrats. The student trustee on our Board of Trustees, and thank you so much for doing that also. In November, the Board of Trustees also held their first subcommittee meetings as part of our committee restructuring. The meetings enabled board members to dig deeper on important topics to university, including enrollment, research, and technology. We look forward to continuing these important conversations. And later this week, trustee Sunshine will participate in the Newmark School of Journalism graduation. Thank you, trustee. We're joined today by four students who will be making presentations about research that they're conducting. Please let me introduce, and my apologies if I mispronounce anyone's name, Fadi Ahmed from BMCC, Leila Gad from Hunter College, Yamalet Vasquez from the College of Staten Island, and you, okay, Obiora from the CUNY School of Medicine at City College, and my apologies, you will help me on that, on your full name, my apologies for butchering it there. Our students?
Ma'am?
Thank you.
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. As you all may know by now, the members of the Committee on Student Life have the benefit of hearing from students on a regular basis. Today, you all get to be the beneficiaries of that privilege. And when we think about our roles in academic and student affairs, the fact is that we get to stimulate wonder, and in response, our students produce wonderment. And that is what you will get to experience today. So I trust that you will appreciate the work that our students are doing to punctuate what it is they are doing in their studies and in their majors. And so you will hear from three of our students. One of our students could not be with us. She became ill today. So she will not be able to join us, and that's Yamalet Vasquez, who had a very interesting presentation on using QR codes to mark burial grounds in Staten Island for former slaves. So hopefully, we'll have a chance to bring her before you at another time.
That would be great.
But each of our students will present and share with you what it is that they have learned over time. I share with you a quote from Zora Neale Hurston. "Research is formalized curiosity. It is poking and prying with a purpose." And that is what you will hear at this point. So Fadi?
My name is Fadi Ahmed. I'm a student at Borough of Manhattan Community College, and my major is science. My mentor is Dr. Jose Romero. He's an associate professor at the Science Department. My research today is about HIV protease inhibitors, and I'm very interested about HIV, and I want to contribute to find better way to prevent, treat, or even cure HIV. If we go to the second slide, we will see HIV goes through multiple steps, from attaching to a cell, entering a cell, until start producing infectious viral particles. My research focused on the last step of this cycle, which is, yeah, the one on the blue circle, where the viral progeny becomes infectious. In this research, we focus on an enzyme called HIV protease. This enzyme breaks a viral Boli protein to produce a mature infectious particles. We aim to find the new HIV protease inhibitors that are less toxic, more potent, and have a higher threshold to develop resistance by the virus. Let's see here, yes. And third slide, we will see here, our research is collaboration between a chemist and virologist, where first, a chemist, Dr. Sunday, will identify a potential HIV protease inhibitors using computational modeling. Then, we will purchase those compounds. Then, Dr. Romero and I will test those compounds to see how effective they are in a cell-based assay we established in the laboratory. Our initial data is showing a promising results for one of the compounds we tested. However, we need to conduct more experiments on this compound next semester. For example, we need to do more independent experiments to guarantee the reproducibility of our results, and after that, we need to do preclinical experiment to explore the safety and success in different models. In the end, I want to thank the CRIS program. I want to thank Dr. Jose Fernandez Romero. I want to thank the Center for Biomedical Research, Dr. Sunday Okafor, Jihad Gadsden, and Leilean Guzman for all their help and support. Thank you.
[applause]
Leila?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I just click next? Sorry, guys. Still, I'm a little bit technically challenged.
I think there's a tab on the bottom. You should see your presentation.
Yes, this is me. Okay. I'm sorry. Hi, everybody. My name is Leila Gad. I am currently a junior at Hunter College, and I'm majoring in journalism with a minor in environmental science. I'm also a pre-med student, so I'm a little bit, you know, I mix a lot of things together. I'm also part of McCollay, and I'm currently a CUNY climate scholar, one of the 10 CUNY climate scholars. And I was recently in the VLE program that was graciously offered to me through the Office of Research here at CUNY, so I'm just here to talk to you guys a little bit about psychiatric research. My research is on the effects of dietary interventions on mouse models of depression. So depression is the most common mental disorder in the United States, but recent research in this field has shown that current antidepressants, which target neural cells, like neurons in the brain, are only fully effective in about 20% to 50% of the people who take them. So this led my lab to think, like, you know, we need to find better alternatives, like we need to find better ways to treat depression, both short-term and long-term. So the first step to do that is to find an adequate animal model, and this precedes my time in the lab. But my PI was looking into mice models. A lot of people know that mice are curious. They like to be around others. So we decided to test, will mice replicate, or I guess showcase depressive symptoms like we do in humans? So we raised some mice in control, basically in a group setting, and then we raised some mice in a socially isolated setting. And then we subjected them to behavioral tests, which is basically, if you can see here on these two boxes, we would put one, a new mouse, which is a stimulus inside of a little cage, and then we would introduce the mouse that was either raised in the group setting or raised in the socially isolated setting to it. And if you could see the white, and the white and the black are their tracks, because it's video tracking software that we use to watch how long they would run around, around the new stimulus. And you would see that the control mouse that was raised in the group house would stay really, really close to the new mouse. It was really curious. It wanted to know who it is. It wanted to talk to it. But the mouse that was socially isolated was scared, and it would hide. And I feel like we could all really relate to that, especially in terms of COVID. For me, I was scared for the first time going back to college. I mean, it was a little bit nerve-wracking. So we ran some data analysis, and my PI published this in 2012, and we showed that there was a correlation, a direct significant correlation, between whether a mouse was raised in group house or whether a mouse was raised socially isolated, and their willingness to interact. So now that my lab has proven, okay, mice do mimic depressive symptoms like humans do, we're going to go back to that first thing that I started off with, that we want to look at alternatives to depression treatment. So I think that a lot of us may be familiar with this new rising field and the idea of, like, our brain and our gut communicate. So that's what we sort of tackled, and this is where I come in. We were looking into dietary interventions over the summer, specifically ketogenic diets, which I know that a lot of people might be familiar with, because I feel like we've all tried it at one point. But ketogenic diets are, basically have been shown to be successful in treating autism or epilepsy. So what is a ketogenic diet, before I jump ahead? Ketogenic diets are just basically high-fat, low-carb, and medium-protein type of diets. And it looks like mayo, like this is what I was feeding the mice over the summer. And then I basically replicated the same thing that my PI did in 2012, except this time, I just changed our diet for two weeks. So we would have mice that were grown, I mean, grown, that were raised in group house, and then mice that were raised socially isolated. And then for two weeks, I fed them ketogenic diet instead of their regular diet. And then we basically would do the same, just to bring it back. I would do the same type of behavioral tests, where I would introduce them to a new stimulus, and then I would see, like, you know, how long did it interact with the new stimulus? So our data here is shown, the green is the regular diet, and the purple is the ketogenic diet, and you could see that from the group, from the group to the, sorry, from the group to the ketogenic diet, isolated, it actually went down. But compared to the ketogenic diet, from group to isolated, it actually went up. There was statistical significance, the fact that ketogenic diets restored the mice's behavior. The mouse who was raised isolated but was fed ketogenic diet for two weeks was now interested and intrigued, and it wanted to talk to the new mouse. So this was a really important, I guess, discovery that I had over the summer, and it made my lab think, like, why is this happening? And what is the ketogenic diet doing in our brains to basically restore this social behavior that the mouse had originally lost when it was socially isolated? So this comes into the second part of my study that I'm currently working on right now, because I still work at the lab. We're looking at the underlying neurobiological mechanism of the ketogenic diet, and this is another really interesting, novel part of my lab, and I feel like working at the Epigenetics Core at the Advanced Science Research Center is really what's allowing us to do this, like, I guess, front-running type of research. A lot of depression-related research is really focused on the neural cells, even though that majority of our brain is made up of non-neural cells, which are called GLIA. So right now, we are really focused on studying these non-neural cells, specifically oligodendrocytes, as we have sort of found that there's a link between myelin and depression. Myelin is, basically, like axons are what transmit ideas and messages in our brain, and they're really important to social behavior. Myelin makes those messages go faster. So think of insulation. That's what myelin basically is. And oligodendrocytes produce that. So we're targeting them right now, and we're looking at how are they impacted by the ketogenic diet? And that's something called epigenetics, where we look at the interface between environment and gene expression. Environment could just be, like, in the cages they're raised, or the food they're eating. And I guess that's the end of my talk. I just would really like to thank my PI and the grad student that I worked with over the summer, and the VLE program, and the Office of Research for giving me this really interesting opportunity to work on something that's so pertinent to what's happening right now for my peers and, like, people of all ages. So, yeah, thank you.
[applause]
Next, we have Ebube Chukwu, who is a first-year medical student. So when you do all of these other things, you wind up in medical school. Where are you? You going over there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ebube Chukwu Obiora. I'm a first-year medical student in the CUNY School of Medicine. I'm also the class representative for my year, and anyone can refer to me as Ebube. That's what I'm more so commonly go by. So first and foremost, I would like to thank you for this honor of speaking before you all, to the Board of Trustees, as well as Chancellor Rodriguez for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity. I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself and the program, as well as my current research that I'm doing. Currently, I'm doing research under Dr. John Martin, and under the mentorship of Dr. Preston Williams for spinal cord injury repair. So essentially, what we're doing is inducing spinal cord injury on mice in order to use cortisone therapy to see how much musculoskeletal function we can regain on the mice, and then apply this in humans who are involved in serious trauma, such as car crashes, or who've had any prior SCI injuries, and finding ways, effective ways, of restoring motor function, because it can be frustrating to live a very active lifestyle and having all of that abruptly end due to unfortunate circumstances. So currently, I'm in the CUNY School of Medicine. Prior to attending this beautiful program, I was a high schooler, and I'm a memorial high school. And growing up, I watched my mother, who was a nurse practitioner, go to and from work, share stories about her job, tell me all about the patient interactions, and it really sparked my interest in the medical field. And that's what led me to pursue a career in the medical field. Currently, I'm an aspiring anesthesiologist, specifically, I would like to go into pain management. And this was all based on my mother's work in palliative care and what she told me about patients. And following the finding of the program, I reached out to my father, and my father reached out to Ms. Peel, and I was able to get connected, and Ms. Peel really helped a lot in my journey to attend the CUNY School of Medicine. After my acceptance, there was a premature matriculation program that is done by the School for Incoming Students over the summer. It's a quick eight-week program, which matriculates you into the program through outings and certain classes that get you accustomed to the college lifestyle. Through it, I was able to establish connections with students, two of which are here with me today, and it was really a great way to transition into college for me. Alongside this, there was an outing that was organized by the Blackmail Initiative, BMI. They have been with me every step of the way. Mr. Erbs is even here with me today. So essentially, let me tell you a little bit about BMI quickly. BMI started in 2006. It increases the number of physicians, or its goal is to increase the number of underrepresented physicians, same with the school, for specifically black men in the medical world. And it's a stepwise mentorship program in the sense that we have physicians who are currently attendants, we have physicians who are currently in residency, we have really a wide network of individuals who always give back and attend biweekly meetings with us, and really mentor and make sure that each student that attends those meetings is taken care of and understands what they need to do going forward. So aside from Mr. Erbs, I would also like to give thanks to Ms. Joy Richards, who works with the LRC. Essentially, their goal is to make sure that the students have adequate aid in their classes. If anyone is falling behind, they can always refer to the LRC, and they can get tutoring sessions. Ms. Leonie Peel, who's head of, who aids in applications, she remembers all of the students' names, and small things like that really go a long way. It makes you feel that you're part of a family, and that's what really the CUNY School of Medicine is. It's a family that is there with you every single step of the way. Dean Macbeth played a critical role in my journey there as well, making sure my health forms was in order. Any confusions, he clarified it for me, and I really thank him a lot for that. And ultimately, none of this would have happened if I wasn't in the program. So the biggest thanks I give is to the CUNY School of Medicine for existing. Currently, we are the fourth in the underrepresented medicine population. We're number one in New York in terms of underrepresented women in medicine, and we're also number four for African-American women in medicine in the country. Seventy to eighty percent of our students who graduate from the program end up working in New York City, showcasing that our goal is being recognized and given back to the community. And all of these statistics is really just to show you that we are doing what we were established to do. And with more funding, we can duplicate the success on a much greater scale. And also, we can aid underrepresented students with scholarships which can make things more affordable. And I really love how this school established everything, what they've been doing for the community. I'm proud to be part of it, and I really can't wait to see where my career will go and where this school will go in the future. And again, thank you for this opportunity.
[applause] Let's see that CUNY students are making a difference and helping to solve some of the world's biggest problems, even with mice. So thank you.
Thank you. Let me thank the students again for taking their time out of their schedules to come and speak to us today. Thank you all so much. Thank you. Okay, moving on. The chancellor is out ill and isn't joining us today, but he's asked that his report be distributed and entered into the minutes, so we'll make sure that we do that. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. I'm going to have, in the interest of time, I guess we're going to have, once we start to get into the other resolutions, we're going to have the secretary read the headings on the resolutions, then we'll move into a vote on those. But item number one, draft minutes of the regular board meeting, executive session on October 24th, 2022, board meeting. I'd like to move item number one. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? We'll now have a vote to approve the minutes. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item number two, the Committee on Governance. Item 2A is a resolution to approve the new gender-based violence and workplace policy and mending and restating the domestic violence and the workplace policy adopted in 2013.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item number two, the Committee on Governance. Item 2A is a resolution to approve the new gender-based violence and workplace policy and mending and restating the domestic violence and the workplace policy adopted in 2013.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 2B is a resolution to amend Article II Policy 2.04 and 2.041 of the Manual of General Policy of the Board of Trustees.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item number three is the Committee on Audit and Compliance. Item 3A is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2022 audited financial statements.
All right. I'd like to move item 3A. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. We're going to move to, any discussion on this item?
No.
Okay. All right. No discussion? All right. Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to adopt the fiscal year 2023 internal audit charter.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item number four is the Committee on Finance and Administration. Item 4A is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2023-2024 university budget request.
I'd like to move this item. Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. Discussion on this item? Mr. Batiste, I believe this is...
We have a presentation?
We have a brief presentation on the item.
And it's on the, it should be on the bottom. Christina, the laptop, you'll see the tabs, and your presentation should be right there.
As the board members know, from any conversation at CUNY around the budget, as we presented to the Finance Committee, Administration Committee of the Board, the last couple of years have been very challenging for the higher education in current CUNY. Federal stimulus funding has financially protected the colleges, who have experienced decline in revenues, mostly related to enrollment. However, these funds are non-recurring, and the university lost about $141 million in revenues since FY 2019, which represents a decline of 10% overall, 3% for the senior colleges, and 35% for community colleges. To address these challenges, the FY 24 budget request on the operating side requests an increase of 16% in the state support and an increase of 30% in city support, for a total of $419 million in new operating funds, and continue to recommend tuition fees for FY 24. On the capital side, FY 24 request is a request for $983 million as part of the five-year plan that seeks $5.5 billion in capital requests. On the programmatic investment, we'll focus on six main areas: enrollment and retention, graduation and outcomes, online multimodality program development, workforce skill and outcomes, public impact service research and scholarship, and modernizing the CUNY system. Under the enrollment retention request includes an investment of faculty development by institutionalizing the CUNY Innovative Teaching Academy and expanding the CUNY Faculty Fellowship Program, support for the enhancement of enrollment systems to provide students with better admission, registration, financial aid process, support of streamlining the transfer process, and investment in adult continuing education, which, as the board knows, is the second-largest recruitment mechanism for degree program students, and investment in graduate education to fund fellowship, stipends, enhancement of doctoral program, hire 50 diverse, research-focused, tenure-track faculty. On the area of graduate outcomes, the request includes the investment of diverse academic career advisors that will enable CUNY to hire 125 academic career advisors, and investment of predictive analytics to improve the students' onboarding, advising, registration, financial aid, and other administrative systems, and investment in academic advising, and investment in baseline, and expanding our very successful ACE program, and an investment in student well-being to provide our students with the need of mental health services and resources. Under the area of online and multimodality programs development, the request includes an investment to address the the request includes an investment to address the increased student demands for greater flexibility in the course of modality and online learning, more specifically to ask support for the development of building our online program as well as to invest in training faculty in best practice in online learning, pedagogy, and program development. On the area of workforce, workforce, workforce skills and outcome, the request includes investment to online curriculum to scale that will allow students to obtain jobs upon graduation and investment to expand industry faculty collaboration for new fields of studies, bringing industry professionals into the classroom, and support internship partnerships that, that will include, that will have industries help us create a pipeline from classroom to employment. Under the area of public impact services, research, scholarship, the request includes investment to modernize and streamline the undergrad proposal and management, incentivize research partnership across the university, develop a research program on the graduate students in STEM discipline by expanding CUNY research scholarship programs, as well as investing in CUNY Medical School, as you heard from, uh, an investment that, uh, it's a school that really works on, on really working with underrepresented minority communities in the field of medicine. At this point, I want to pause and allow our provost to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions?
Well, no questions, I'll continue. Um, finally, under the area of modernization CUNY system, the request includes an investment to evaluate reimagining our systems, including ERP, which includes finance, HR, student information system, as well as support the infrastructure maintenance of renewal repairs to our infrastructure. As the board knows, fifty-two percent of our CUNY buildings are over fifty years old and our deferred maintenance has a, has a backlog of four point three billion dollars. Unless the board has any, any questions here, I will turn it over to Christina, who will walk, Christina Chiapi, who will walk you through the numbers in more detail. Christina?
Great, thanks Hector. So I just wanted to kind of go back and look at the numbers a little bit. So we've structured the budget request in three ways. The first is the programmatic request, which, uh, CEO Batista just went over. And this, the program act request not only seeks to advance the university's mission, but also focuses on areas which will enhance the university's enrollment through various recruitment and retention activities. Uh, some of the things that Hector mentioned was online programs, career and academic advisors, predictive analytic software, and initiatives to support transfer student. The second focus area we had was on mandatory needs and I'm just gonna flip back and forth for a second here. Um, so really, this request focuses on new and incremental cost increases that we're projected to have in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four. So while both the state and city have generally funded the costs of collective bargaining increases on a routine basis, this has not always been the case with collective bargaining or contractually mandated step increases. So we're gonna be asking both the state and city to fully fund those in both fiscal twenty-four and going forward. Going back to the other slide, and our third request was really focused on strategic funding that will assist the university close our structural gap. And there are two items here. The first is, we're requesting the state to baseline one-time strategic funds of forty million dollars that they provided in the fiscal twenty-three inactive budget. And the second ask here is funding to support education of STEM students. As you are aware, uh, those students are more costly to educate, not only for they have smaller class size, but also because those faculty in those class, uh, that teach STEM majors, um, have typically higher salaries. So just one final slide to wrap up. So overall, our operating quest, we're asking the state for additional three hundred and thirty-nine million of support and the city eighty million dollars of support. So moving on to the capital request, um, so as Hector mentioned at the beginning, uh, we've asked for five point five billion dollars, uh, over five years. Our request for fiscal twenty-four is nine hundred and eighty-three million. So our capital request is aligned with and supports the university's strategic priorities, a lot of them which have already been mentioned here. And it reflects the commitment to undertake projects to maintain and improve the university's infrastructure that is essential to student success, recapture, unduly utilized spaces, improve technology, and provide for campus expansion. And there are also three, three different areas that are reflected in, in this request. There are the CUNY, CUNY-wide initiatives that, there's both a senior and community college component. There's IT in here, and then there's also college-specific, uh, campus-specific projects for both, um, uh, senior and community colleges. So just first going over the CUNY-wide initiatives, these are funds that are set aside to address specific priority areas. One of the main priorities, the, the top one in our request for this year really is requesting five million dollars for, uh, funding for HVAC upgrades, uh, which were identified, identified part of as an extensive study. Other items in these CUNY-wide requests relate to science lab upgrades, health and safety, emergency, uh, C equipment, and ADA compliance. Uh, moving on to technology, uh, which you'll see in here, uh, the university is really requesting, um, funding for seven key initiatives that are located in page twenty-five and twenty-six of the budget request. And if I was gonna just summarize them, uh, quickly, there's three main buckets, which I would call, um, there's, the first is really funding for our next-generation academic administrative software system and that's really replacement of, in phase one, uh, finance and HR and university-wide. And the second is our student financial systems. There are also three different project requests that relate to cybersecurity, either directly or indirectly. And the final two projects really relate to consolidations, um, across the university and really relate to cloud consolidation and identity management consolidation. And really, the final thing I wanted to just mention a couple of things about is really the, the campus-specific projects. Uh, Hector mentioned the state of good repair. There is an element on both the operating side and the capital side related to the state of repair. Uh, currently, about eight percent of our buildings are considered to be in the state of good repair and our goal is to get to fifty-five percent by fiscal year two thousand and twenty-eight. Um, so we're requesting, again, about a hundred and ten individual, uh, college-specific projects um, that will help us with our backlog of deferred maintenance, but also as well as to keep on, uh, ongoing needs as they arrive. And there's more details in that request, uh, in the book on that, on page twenty-four and twenty-five. So I, that's kind of, I'm done with my remarks on that. I don't know if there's any questions.
Any questions? Yes.
I noticed that a large, like, the budget has a lot of emphasis on infrastructure, which is great. I was wondering, um, I was wondering why it's happening like now? Is there a reason we are having this big focus on infrastructure now and not like during the two years and a half, the students were not on campus? Just some context about that.
I mean, so our last, uh, our last year's request, um, was, uh, a similar value. Last year, uh, we had requested a little over a billion dollars for fiscal twenty-three. So I think the dollar amounts of the requests have been pretty consistent over the time.
And, and I think this year, we're more targeted to investment that will help with the bottom line in terms of making, getting the university. We, 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 we have to invest, some investment in order to try to get out of some of these challenges that we're having. And it's, it's, it's initiatives that our provost has put forth and we're, we're supporting to try, like the online space and other areas.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay, um, I guess we'll move, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, we'll move to a vote. Um, all of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four B is a resolution to authorize a revised Higher Education Emergency Relief Fund allocation plan.
All right, I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four C is a resolution to authorize a contract with Anthology Inc. for a customer relationship management solution.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the item? Any questions? All right, we'll move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four D is a resolution to authorize a contract extension with First Transit Inc. for bus transportation services to the College of Staten Island.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just want to stress how important this initiative is on the College of Staten Island. As most of you know, Staten Island has transportation deserts and as the college is a prime destination for a lot of people on the island, it also connects our downtown campus to the Main Wallbrook campus. So I appreciate everybody supporting this.
Thank you, trustee. Any other comments, questions? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four E is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four F is a resolution to appoint Sharon Warren Cook as Vice President of Student Affairs at Kingsborough Community College, effective December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at an annual salary of a hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars, subject to financial ability.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four G is a resolution to appoint Manuel Romero as Vice President for Communications and External Affairs at LaGuardia Community College, effective December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, at a salary of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, subject to financial ability.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion on the item? Any questions? We'll now vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four H is a resolution to authorize a requirements agreement with New York City Department of Education to provide degree and certification services for teachers and teacher candidates.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'm delighted and honored to, to second this, Mr. W. D. H.
Thank you, thank you, trustee. Any discussion, any questions on this item? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item four I is a resolution to authorize the extension of the outsourced Chief Investment Officer Contract with Makita Fiduciary Management LLC.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item number five is the Committee on Education Policy. Item five A is a resolution to establish a program in health sciences leading to the Associate of Science Degree at Bronx Community College.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item five B is a resolution to establish the Daniel Patrick Moynihan Center at the City College of New York.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item five C is a resolution to delegate the approval of requests to offer credit-bearing programs in a distance format to the chancellor or his designees.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Any questions? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item five D is a resolution requesting the approval of the Faculty Personnel Matters Report to the Education Policy Committee.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item five B is a resolution requesting approval of the actions in the Curriculum and Academic Policy Dashboard.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item six is the Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. Item six A is a resolution to name the Richard W. Lackman Endowed Chair of Sociology at Queens College.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item six B is a resolution to name the Professor Arlene D. Potus Business and Computer Information Systems Classroom at Queensborough Community College.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item six C is a resolution to name the Joseph M. Shore Reading Room at Macaulay Honors College.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item seven is the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Item seven A is a resolution to authorize renovations to the Pearl Street Building, third floor, at New York City College of Technology.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item seven B is a resolution to authorize a lease amendment with APF twenty-eight W. forty-four Owner LP as landlord at twenty-eight West Forty-Fourth Street, New York, New York, to extend the term of the lease premises for the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second? Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item seven C is a resolution to authorize a lease amendment with APF twenty-eight W. four-four Owner LP as landlord at twenty-eight West Forty-Fourth Street, New York, New York, to expand the lease premises for the CUNY School of Labor and Urban Studies.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item eight is a resolution to amend Article Two Policy two point one-two Presidential Searches to add language to include former trustees among the trustees to be appointed to presidential search committees.
I'd like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
As a matter of fact, I'd like to move this item with an amendment to replace Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration with Education Policy. So I'd like to move that as amended. May I have a second?
Good, second.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item nine is a resolution to accept a gift from Leonard A. Lauder and to endow and name the Evelyn Lauder Community Care Nurse Practitioner Program at Hunter College.
I would like to move this item. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the item?
Yes. Just to appreciate to make the point, actually, an alumna of the Hunter Nursing School and I know our wonderful trustee, Lauren Cortez, uh, Hunter College, also alumna. Uh, in my case, a long time ago, of course. Uh, but to remember as a student, uh, being a nurse, uh, that it's not, uh, what you've done as a nurse, but who in fact you are as a nurse. And so many of us have the opportunities of, of knowing nurses in, uh, in various areas. So it truly stayed with me, uh, in, in my life and that nurses are one where the intersection of health, education, and communities are. Uh, and that the Evelyn Lauder Community Care Nurse Practitioner Program will have the opportunity for nurse practitioner students be ready and able to meet the people of New York's healthcare needs. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, trustee.
Uh, as, um, as a Hunter alumni, I'm really proud of this achievement, but also as Commissioner for the Department for the Aging. It was not lost on me that this also includes a geriatric component to it. And as you, if you all know, the older population is growing exponentially. And as you, if you all know, the older population is growing exponentially, globally, but particularly fast in New York. This is a tremendous gift. This is a tremendous opportunity, and it speaks to the quality of Hunter. So I congratulate all who were involved with it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Any other comments? Any discussion? All right, we'll now move to a vote. Um, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item has been approved. Um, the chancellor has asked the board to consider an additional resolution. I'll ask the secretary to read the resolution for the record, and we'll first vote to add the item, and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail?
Item 10 is a resolution to appoint Jeffrey Rotis as Vice Chancellor for Government Affairs at the City University of New York. The resolution reads as follows: Whereas Jeffrey Rotis has been serving as Chief of Staff to the First Deputy Mayor of the City of New York, overseeing a portfolio that includes four deputy mayors, the Chief Housing Officer, the Chief Technology Officer, the Chief Efficiency Officer, the Finance Department, the Department of Citywide Administrative Services, and the Office of Management and Budget. And whereas Mr. Rotis was previously Senior Vice President at Connolly, McLaughlin, and Wolos from 2015 to 2021, where he developed policy initiatives, tracked legislation, and worked closely with legislative leaders and elected officials. And whereas from 2014 to 2015, Mr. Rotis was Deputy Chief of Staff to the Speaker of the New York City Council, where he oversaw the Finance and Administrative Services Divisions and managed a staff of 90 professionals. And whereas Mr. Rotis spent 13 years in the New York City Council Finance Division, serving as Deputy Director, Capital Budget, and rising to First Deputy Director, where he advised the Speaker and council members on budget issues, policy matters, public debt, and economic development, and partnered with the Finance Director to negotiate the city's $70 billion expense and $38 billion capital budget with the New York City Office of Management and Budget. And whereas Mr. Rotis holds a Master's of Public Administration from Baruch College and a BA in Political Science from SUNY Stony Brook, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees at the City University of New York approve the appointment of Jeffrey Rotis as Vice Chancellor for Government Affairs at a salary of $296,000, effective January 17th, 2023. Explanation is as follows: The appointment of Mr. Rotis as Vice Chancellor will ensure that the university's partnerships with the City of New York, State of New York, and federal government are strategically aligned. His experience working on and with the New York City Council in numerous capacities will also be a benefit to the entire community. The chancellor highly recommends this appointment with a waiver of the search requirements.
All right, I would make a motion to add item number 10 to our agenda. May I have a second? All right, item 10 has been added. Uh, I'd like to move item number 10. May I have a second to that?
Yes.
Any discussion on the item? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. And congratulate Mr. Rotis on him joining us. Before I move to an adjournment, one thing I neglected to mention earlier is trustee Mojica's appointment, uh, in Puerto Rico. And while the State of New York loses a great budget director, Puerto Rico is very lucky to have somebody of his quality. The finances in Puerto Rico have had their ups and downs for, for years now. If there's anybody who can bring stability to the budgeting in Puerto Rico and to the outlook and the focus, it is trustee Mojica. So I offer my congratulations. I know that, like I said, the people of Puerto Rico, and truthfully, Puerto Rico's budget affects so many, so much else, and affects this country. So, again, trustee, thank you so much for your work, for it is not going to be easy, but it is greatly appreciated. And, um, however, let's make a point, he is still staying on the board.